I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item for this evening is our agenda. Dr. Dance, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
There are none.
Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a change as well to the agenda.
Okay.
Does that have to be...I'm always confused about when to do it.
All right.
It should be done before the adoption.
Well, we've adopted the agenda now. I think the time was before.
Okay, but the last time I did it, and I tried to put it in right with Dr. Dance's, you said it had to be voted separately. So we voted on whether or not he had it, you know, with his changes, and then we vote.
But we already adopted the agenda.
Yeah, we've made a motion to adopt our agenda. Is that...well, I'll...what motion would you like to make?
And it was what we discussed earlier, is just to add in the committee report.
Okay. All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right. All in favor of adding an agenda item, please?
Can I just understand what the conversation was about adding them?
Yeah, it was just to allow committee reports because it's not on the agenda, and if that's typically a regular agenda item.
Is that at every meeting?
No, we hadn't planned to do it.
Not at the work meeting.
At every meeting. So, I mean, and I don't know that our committee chairs are prepared to report this evening. But it would have to be...I mean, I'll allow for a vote. I mean, you've made the motion, it's been second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Okay, thank you. Agenda stays as is.
Clarify what meeting...we ought to clarify at what meeting that is an agenda item.
I will do that. I'll make sure.
I thought we had said the first meeting, yeah.
Okay. All right. Our next item is selection of speakers. Sign-up cards were available to the public prior to the meeting for anyone wishing to speak at this evening's meeting. Board practice limits the number of speakers at a regularly scheduled board meeting to ten. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to discuss his or her issue. The completed sign-up cards for this evening have been placed in the box to my right, and the first ten drawn from the box will be our speakers for tonight during the public comment portion of the meeting. If fewer than ten sign-up cards are received, all who sign up will be permitted to speak.
Ilana Santos. Amanpreet Singh, number two. David Green, number three. Our fourth speaker is Ramaya Ravapulali. Our fifth speaker is Bash Faroon. Our sixth speaker is Subja Sofiana. Our seventh speaker is Junaid Malik. And our last speaker for the evening is Zubair Malik.
Thank you, Ms. Swalia. All right, we'll go move into our public comment portion of the meeting. This is one of the opportunities we provide to hear views and receive the advice of our community members. The members of the board appreciate hearing from interested citizens and will take your comments into consideration, even though it is not our practice to take action at this time on issues which are raised. When appropriate, we will refer your concerns to the superintendent for follow-up by staff. While we encourage public input on policy, programs, and practices within the purview of this board and school system, this is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters, or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. We encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues for redress for complaints. I would like to remind the public the inappropriate personal remarks or other behavior that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting are out of order. I ask you to observe the timer, which will let you know when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks when you hear the bell or see that the time has expired. And we'll begin our public comment portion with our advisory and stakeholder groups. And our first speaker tonight is Ms. Abby Baten, President of TAPCO.
Good evening, Chairman McDaniel's, Vice Chairman Gillis is not here, Dr. Dance, and members of the board. With less than a month left of the school year, it is not only an incredibly busy time with graduations, end-of-year final exams, classrooms for the summer, but it is also a time to reflect on the year and think ahead to next year. While summertime is busy, it is not quite as frenetic as the school year. It allows us to take the time to think and plan for the future without the distractions that naturally occur when we are in the midst of the school year. As we look back over the year, we can assess with more clarity what worked, what didn't, what saved, what needs to go, and what will be our priorities. This reflection is important for any organization. TAPCO has begun to identify certain issues that we hope can be addressed over the summer. The most important issue is discipline. We hear from teachers and other school employees about this issue more than any other topic. We are working through faculty councils in many schools to understand and address the issue. We need to look at the issue systematically as well, and systemically. What can we as a system put into place to make sure our students and staff are safe? Substitutes and the lack of adequate effective substitutes has also become a huge issue throughout the county. The new grading and reporting initiative is yet another issue that we are pleased will be piloted next school year. Of course, testing remains another big issue. It is an issue we hope with the changes to the Elementary and Secondary Education Act and the State Testing Commission will finally be proper. Finally, we will be working toward bringing community schools to BCPS. We want to take the time necessary with this project so we can not only have community schools in place, but have community schools done correctly and sustainably. We look forward to working collaboratively with BCPS on these and other important education subjects. One thing is for certain: the school system never has a summer off. We must use that time wisely to address those issues that we can't during the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baten. Our next speaker is from our Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, P.J. Schaefer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Dr. Dance, Chairman McDaniel's. I'm P.J. Schaefer from the Vice Chair of the CAC. I'm also the parent of an eighth grader with an IEP at Cockeysville Middle. This year, the last two meetings of the CAC, we went on the road. We met at Woodlawn Library as well as North Point Library to get out of Towson to give some of our members the ability to have closer commutes or join us if they weren't able to make it all the way to Towson. Those two meetings were somewhat lightly attended, but we did at least give, you know, the community opportunity to come see us in different locations. Another topic, and I'm going to bounce around a little bit tonight, and forgive me for trying to keep up, that we'd like to talk about is curriculum and instruction. A lot of the kids with IEPs are behind in grade level, and they're not doing necessarily grade-level work. The Curriculum and Instruction Office writes the curriculum, but doesn't have the benefit of members of the Special Ed Office helping them to write that curriculum. So what happens is the curriculum then needs to be adapted in every Special Ed classroom, putting an unbelievable burden on our teachers to go ahead and adapt the curriculum to each particular child with an IEP to their particular grade level in place of academic learning. What we'd like to see, and the ask is, that the Office of Special Ed be able to put staff on the curriculum writing committee so that the curriculum can better be scaffolded to help those students with IEPs access the regular curriculum. Next jump. One of the things that you've heard from me over the years, and I've been involved with CAC for years and years and years, has been the ask for consistency at the top. In the six years or so that I've been working with the CAC and coming to speak to you, we've had five different Directors of Special Ed. Last year, Deborah Books had been elevated to the Executive Director's position. That position has remained vacant pretty much for this year. I think that students with IEPs really could benefit from having an advocate at the executive level, and we'd also like to see some consistency so that, again, there's somebody in a position advocating for kids with IEPs on a regular basis and not just this turnover from year to year to year. Last but not least, well, two things. One is there...I'll jump ahead. Item K4 is a contract that's going to benefit Special Ed in the agenda tonight. It has to do with speech OT, audiology, and other services. CAC supports that, member of the agenda. Last but not least, we've had some very positive interaction with the Office of E-Learning and the Educational Options. They are providing some great work and doing some great things to allow students with IEPs, and really all students, to either speed up and get extra credits in a shorter period of time, or where it really benefits many of our kids with IEPs is they have a full year, calendar year, that is, not just the regular academic year, to complete a course. Giving some...that extra flexibility really benefits our students, and I thank you and wish you all good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Our next speaker in the public speaker portion of our meeting is Eliana Santos.
Good afternoon, Chairman McDaniel's, Dr. Dance, and members of the board. My name is Eliana Santos, and I'm a senior at Western School of Technology and Environmental Science. It has come to the student body's attention that schools will not be closed on June 6, 2016, for our graduation. Therefore, all of our teachers will not be able to attend. Today, I am here to ask to reconsider this decision. We take pride in the teamwork that has led Western to become a national blue-ribbon school, as well as the top school in the county. That being said, we must acknowledge that our teachers have played an instrumental role in our accomplishments. These same teachers are the ones that took the time to write countless letters of recommendations for our college applications and scholarships, and even adjusted their schedules to hold after-school coach classes. Their unwavering support is just one reason as to why they deserve to watch the class of 2016 walk across the stage. Our teachers have become family over the past four years, and the idea of graduating without them in the audience seems impossible. We feel so strongly about this issue that even with just a couple of days of high school left, the class of 2016 did what we know how to do best, which is work together to create a petition, which is undoubtedly gaining attention. Today, we have more than 250 signatures and expect to double that number by the end of the week, and so we ask the board to reconsider this decision.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Amanpreet Singh. Singh.
Can we please take my name off the list?
Oh, you're not going to speak?
No, we have a bunch of people speaking.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Mr. David Green.
Good evening. I'm here to follow up on what Abby Baten said related to discipline. And part of what you're dealing with, savvy technologists and executives have known for a very long time that when you're looking at a system, you optimize for the whole and not for the parts. And if you optimize for the parts, sometimes what you get is this. Edward's...this is a picture of Edward Scissorhands, and he's optimized for cutting ability, which lets him trim hedges and so forth, but if he wants to be a wide receiver, play the flute, or hug somebody, it doesn't work so well. And I was reminded of this...so this is the best example of how you think about optimizing. And I was reminded of this a couple of months ago when the superintendent was talking about optimizing, and he was talking about optimizing the printing systems. And so I have a second picture, which you might call Edward Printer Hands. And so I wasn't surprised when I started hearing grumbling from a lot of different places about how the new printer system is working, and if you optimize like this, you...the whole suffers, and there can be lots of little things that go bad, and I think that's probably what's happening with the printer system. Now, this isn't the biggest problem in the world, but I think it relates to Abby's problem, which was discipline and so forth. And so here's another picture, and I have here the graduation rate. So if you're talking about the graduation rate, which we have really seemed to be optimizing for, it seems we've bragged about how much we've improved that, but anytime you optimize a system, you want...parts of the system, like the graduation rate, you need to think about how that affects the other parts of the system. And my suggestion, I would suggest to you that the heavy emphasis on graduation rate has had a direct effect on standards for both behavior and academics. So if we want more graduation, what can we do? We can let people have more offensive behaviors as being acceptable, and we might lower the standards for graduating. So the message again is when you're optimizing, you've got to think about the whole, and anytime you do that, you need to think about what is the impact of your changes, whether it's the printer system or the graduation rate, what is the impact of that going to be on the whole system? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Our next speaker is Ramaya Ravapulali.
I apologize, I would like to remove my name from the list as well.
Oh, that's no problem. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Faroon.
Would you like to remove your name from the list, Dr. Faroon?
I'd like to ask you for the minutes of the previous... Good evening to all, and I will keep it brief. You know, my name is Bashar Faroon. And actually, when I first came to the U.S., my chairman told me that your name is Bash Faroon, so that's the American one. And I actually really like my American name, but nonetheless, talking about discipline and other things, I really truly believe that what made me stick with the school system is the general discrimination that I have endured and my sons endured. It comes from the name, it comes from opportunities, and so forth. So as a foreigner, I really like my name to be pronounced well. And one of the positive things that I've really heard some of the universities do is they really practice the pronunciation of foreign names in a way that it really makes those students or graduates really feel proud of themselves and be happy. And of course, you know, on the side, as I told you before, and I'm not really bragging, I have three boards, and there are many physicians in my profession that are advanced far more than me, and I can't really find a reason except, you know, where I came from and my religion, my name. Be as it may, when my kids went to Baltimore County Public Schools, they really had difficulties, and oftentimes they come in, oftentimes not really speaking to us about what's the problem. We could tell that they have been harassed for either a name or being an Arab or Asian or Muslim. And my focus today, and each time I really talk to you, is that my grandchildren, my new grandchild, would not really face the same. So I could do a whole lot of things in 12 years of coming to the board. I'm attached to you for that reason, and I am really hopeful that whenever really you come to decide about the holidays, equal is equal, equal is fair, equal holidays. I ask you to close the schools on Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Ahdha, equal to Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah. And I really ask you also to practice the pronunciation of Eid al-Fitr. I know it's difficult, all right, but we are a diverse society. I do do that in my practice. When I have foreign people, I practice the name before I go to the door and introduce myself. So not to belabor, oh, I lost my minutes, but this is the reason why I'm here, all right? I could go sailing, I could go and work more, but I really believe in equality and equity, and I'm really wishing that I be part of that in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Faroon. Our next speaker is Sibka Soufayan.
I'm here to show my support for Western Tech, and I would like to throw my name from the list.
All right. Well, thank you for coming. Our next speaker is Janelle Malik.
Good afternoon, Chairman McDaniel, Dr. Dance, and members of the board. My name is Junaid Malik, and like the speakers before me, I'm a graduating senior at Western Tech. I'm here today as a representative of the student body, as a result of a decision by the county to make June 6 our graduation date a normal school day. The unintended consequences of this decision for students, teachers, and BCPS as a whole are largely negative. We hope that by presenting these to you, the board will reconsider this decision and not make our graduation a normal school day for Western students and staff. One of the most important consequences of this policy is the effect it has on teachers. The requirements of going to school on graduation, combined with the 10:00 a.m. timing of the actual ceremony, prevents many of our teachers from attending. These are teachers who have taught us, who have coached us, and who have helped us throughout our high school career. To then stop them from attending graduation would go against the ideals and values of BCPS. In terms of equality of value Dr. Dance has stressed many times, every high school in BCPS, except Western Tech and Woodlawn, will have their graduation in a timeframe outside of the normal school day. To treat these schools differently, two of the most diverse in the county, would go against the value of equity that is supposed to guide BCPS policy. In terms of transparency, which has been a cornerstone of Blueprint 2.0, there have also been issues. For one, we were only notified of the change two weeks before the final day of school for seniors. Whether this was intentional or not, the perception it has created is that BCPS deliberately wanted to prevent complaints from students and parents. While I would like to believe that this is not the case, the damage has been done. If transparency and communication truly are values BCPS believes in, then we urge the board to listen to students and parents, over 250 of whom have signed a petition against this requirement, and in doing so, reverse this decision. In terms of creating a culture of deliberate excellence, this decision also has serious implications. Graduation represents the culmination of not only the hard work and dedication of students and parents, but that of teachers. Removing teachers from graduation will ignore their contribution to our success, a contribution that has made Western Tech the number-one school in BCPS. Teachers are an integral part of education. Unfortunately, they are consistently overlooked in policy decisions. If BCPS wishes to reaffirm its commitment to teachers, then preventing them from going to graduation is not the way to do it. The one just at its core, then, this issue is about preserving both the concept and the reality of a team BCPS. In recognizing that goal, we hope that this board will act in the best interests of students, parents, and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker for the evening is Zabar Malik.
Good afternoon, Chairman McDaniel and Dr. Dance and members of the board.
Good afternoon.
Well, as my brother was talking about, the one justification for keeping school open on graduation is that will allow us to meet the number of hours required by law for students to be in school. However, with or without school, Western Tech is on track to meet and even exceed the number of hours required by June 17. Moreover, last year, BCPS closed our school for graduation just days before the actual ceremony, and this sets a dangerous precedent for closing school on graduation, which is very important...excuse me, very important to students and teachers, as well as parents. And as my brother did not mention, for even the underclassmen like myself, I'll have to miss school on this day just to attend my brother's graduation. So it places an undue burden on the underclassmen, who have siblings who go to their school, to miss school and have this opportunity to either go to graduation or go to school and maintain perfect attendance. Furthermore, since all...since some of the students will not be at graduation...I mean, some of the teachers will not be at graduation, the county has provided us with 30 or so substitutes who will be filling in. However, even if these substitutes do come and they fulfill their role, the loss of education that is provided to the students will still be taken into effect. Even if the students...even if the substitutes do their best, the quality of education that is delivered to the students will be subpar at best because the students will not continue on their standard learning path, and they will not be prepared adequately for their final exams, which are coming up in like a week. So as my brother and my fellow students at Western Tech have reaffirmed, we would like to urge you all to reconsider your decision to close school on June 6, to keep school open on June 6. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I certainly would like to thank all of our public speakers for this evening, but particularly, I would like to thank the students from Western Technology for coming here and expressing their thoughts and opinions. And those of you who are undergrads, I hope you will encourage your classmates to come back and speak to us because your voices are very important for us to hear. So thank you again. Mr. Collins?
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that those young men and young ladies who spoke have all their information correct, and if they do, that Western Tech is going to meet the hours, they certainly covered all the bases, and I heard all of the terms that we value, like pursuing deliberate excellence, like equity, like fairness, like getting ready for the examinations, and all of the kinds of things that they spoke about. So I would encourage our hours counters to take a look again, and if they are correct, I would hope that we will, in fact, heed their recommendation. The last thing we want to do as a system is to have a student body that cares so much about their faculty and feels so kindly towards them, and obviously has worked so well together to create a blue-ribbon school, to have their last experience not quite as happy as they want it to be because they didn't have their teachers there. To have students say that to us is powerful. So if it's at all possible, and I think they're probably right, because I think they probably can count, among other things, being graduates of BCPS and probably have the hours figured out, but I'd like to see us address that. And I know we don't usually comment or address specifically yet, and I'm not asking for a comment from anyone, but I really hope we can look closely at that for these students.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Cozy, did you have a comment?
I could comment?
Yes.
I totally agree with what...
I totally agree with what Senator Collins has said, and maybe some alternate plan of a volunteer field trip for those students for whom they have a relative graduating and so forth, and maybe so that in some limited way, I mean, it would be nice if the whole school could take a field trip, but maybe there's not space in the graduation facilities. But if there could be some arrangement for a volunteer field trip for those students that felt most closely to the graduating class, that maybe something like that could be worked out.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is a superintendent's contract. We got a follow-up from previous discussions. At this time, I would ask if I have a motion to approve the version of the superintendent's contract and authorize the board chair to execute the contract?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion at this time? Ms. Miller?
I actually have, I think I have adequately expressed my concerns regarding this over time, but I do have some points I would like to make, but I ask if I could do that after the vote?
Yes. Okay. Ms. Cozy?
So I just wanted to state about this contract that I am going to be voting against it. And I just wanted to reiterate from the last meeting that this is not a personal issue. It's not a difference of opinion issue. Dr. Dance and I have constructive conversations and meetings about the school system. We're both dedicated to working with the staff and the rest of the board for moving it forward, but I'm not going to vote for it, as I had mentioned before, on principle. The percentage increase of the compensation, including the salary and the deferred compensation, far exceeds any increase that teachers, bus drivers, and other support personnel have received over the years. And it just goes to the continuation of an increased expansion of the administrative budget. I'd also like to say that contracts, employment contracts, often are based on performance. And I would say that this compensation package of salary, deferred compensation, retirement, 50 days of vacation, sick and personal time, the car and security and so forth, put this contract at the top value of all superintendents in Maryland. If not the top, it's very close, based on the information that we received. But BCPS is not yet the best in the state of Maryland. We have a ways to go, and we're working at it. And we're committed to working together towards that. But for instance, our facilities are not in the top of the state. With close to 30,000 students without air conditioning, we're actually down at the bottom of the state. Just two districts have a great percentage number of their students in that condition. Many are overcrowded and so forth. So that's just another reason that I don't believe this contract is appropriate. And also, as to the process, there, in my opinion, was not enough time given to it, and there'll be other remarks that spell that out a little more clearly, but that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion at this time? If not, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cozy?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Gilchrist, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Mr. Yul Felder?
Yes.
Mr. Verch?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Walling?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
All right. So the motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Miller, you had a comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to read a statement, and I'm reading this on behalf of myself and my fellow board member, Kathleen Cozy. It is a statement of objection to the process of considering the superintendent's employment contract. As members of the Board of Education of Baltimore County, we make the following objections to the process. Number one, the board voted on a non-existent contract on May 10th. The board leadership, Chuck McDaniel's and Ed Gillis, pushed through a vote on May 10th on the superintendent's contract, even though the details had not been finalized by the board, nor a proposed draft created on which the board could vote. Although the board had until July 1st to produce a signed contract, we were asked to vote blind with only the salary and benefits package determined, but none of the remaining details. Number two, information requests had not been fully answered. Requests for information from board members, which had been solicited by the board chair, had not been fully answered, nor had the chair attempted to get answers beyond those volunteered by the superintendent. Number three, insufficient time allotted for deliberation. The board chair controlled the topics we were permitted to discuss at the April 19th closed session meeting, limiting them to salary and benefits. At the May 10th closed session meeting, only 15 minutes was allotted, causing us to reconvene in closed session later and delaying the open session by almost an hour. Members attempting to have discussion regarding possible amendments were rushed until the vote was called prematurely without resolution of contract terms. Number four, the superintendent attempted to pressure board members during the process. Between the closed and open sessions, the superintendent threatened to refuse to attend the open session meeting on May 10th because the board had not decided upon all the contract details. The decision was made at that time by the board chairman to call the entire board together without reconvening a meeting to express to us the superintendent's dismay. The superintendent was convinced by another board member to acquiesce and attend the open session. Number five, insufficient legal guidance given to the board. Although requested by the board that the board be represented with specialized legal counsel through the process, that idea was rejected, even though the superintendent had hired his own personal negotiator. When questioned on voting on an undrafted contract, the board's legal counsel, Andy Nussbaum, offered no advisement, warning, or counsel regarding the wisdom of such a negotiating practice. Further, when the draft was created by Mr. Nussbaum after the May 10th vote, he took the liberty of picking and choosing what to include in the draft among the items discussed but not voted upon. Number six, the decision was made without regard to a pending ethics complaint. Despite an ethics complaint having been filed on May 6th against the superintendent, which raised many issues pertinent to the superintendent's employment contract details, the board failed to give time for review of the complaint or even give sufficient consideration to the issues raised, which could be addressed in the employment contract for present and future superintendents. Number seven, poor negotiating tactics protected the superintendent's interest, not the board's. The board gave away all leverage upfront by determining the salary and benefits first, while failing to require decisions on any contract requirements on the superintendent before voting for approval 10 to 2 on May 10th. This precluded the ability to leverage salary or benefits against other requirements important to the board. Ms. Cozy and I did all we could do to bring discussion and try to address issues on behalf of the interests of the board, school system, and citizens of the county in the contract approval process. But without the support of a majority of the board, our motions are voted down. The best we can do most times is to shed light on the issues, decisions, and operations of the board. It is to this end that we offer this statement of objection. We ask that this statement be made part of the written public record for this meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to explain my yes vote. Going back to my legislative days, after a vote is taken, the members of the committee sometimes, or of the legislative body, sometimes explain their votes. The perception that Mrs. Miller conveyed and that she indicated was supported by Mrs. Cozy, are two newest board members, both of whom I have a lot of regard for, because they do raise issues for discussion, and they work very, very hard, and they are well-informed. But I think in this case, they are just simply wrong. In the five and a half years that I've been privileged to be on the board, I don't think anyone in the audience, or anyone in the viewing public of the small group of citizens that watch the board meetings regularly, look upon me as a get-along, go-along member, or as a shrinking violet, or as someone who will not speak up. The process was not perfect. We discussed the contract many times, at many meetings, in segmented short periods, to be sure. But the reality is, there was a great deal of discussion, and it became abundantly clear as the process and the discussions moved along, exactly where the sentiments of the board members were. That did not mean that we ignored or didn't give time for comment by all board members who chose to comment. The suggestion that that was done by the chair is not accurate. You've heard me say in public, if you want to consult with the previous three chairman or presidents, as they used to be called, I hollered at them frequently if they tried to shut me up, because that's not something that we do, and it's not something that we have done in this process either. Yes, it was a long time getting here, but we all had copies of the contract delivered to our houses five or six days ago. We knew exactly what was in the contract. We discussed this evening, which is why we were a little late starting and had only five minutes for a snack, not that chubby people like me need any minutes for a snack, but we discussed amendments proposed by some members and adopted, as a matter of fact, one change and a technical amendment proposed by a member to the contract today. We all know what's there, and we had a philosophical discussion of micromanagement in contract language. We had a discussion just today of many other segments in the contract. And obviously, by the vote, a significant majority of the board is comfortable with the contract, and I think it's the right thing to do. I think some of the items that Mrs. Miller enumerated, while I'm not questioning either her memory, or her integrity, or her judgment, I didn't see the things that way, the way she saw them. And that's okay, because in a democracy, in a committee, on a board, you can all look at the same information and come to different conclusions. But I just didn't want to not speak and leave the impression in the body politic or the folks here in the room that the board was feeling the way that was expressed by Mrs. Miller and speaking on behalf of herself and Mrs. Cozy. I don't presume to speak for any other member of the board, but I just wanted to put the affirmative view out there. Yes, it was not a perfect process. It would have been much better, and I said this even tonight to Kathleen, sitting next to her at dinner, it would have been much better if we had taken a day or two and just had a meeting about the superintendent's contract. We're always rushed. We spend many hours here at our meetings, and we're frequently rushed, because there is just so much business that needs to be done. And it's not a perfect system, but we're all volunteers, and we all do the best we can. But I think that the process of establishing this contract was done the best we could, and we all know what's in it. And clearly, except for two of us, we agree with it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Speaking of the business we have to complete, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is on our policies, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Williams at this time.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the board's Policy Review Committee is asking the board to accept the committee's recommendation to amend Board Policy 5230 that has been presented to you on tonight's board agenda as Exhibit G. The policy that is being brought forward for third reader includes the requirement that parents and guardians be notified annually of their rights to review their child-student records and the procedures for verifying system-wide deletion of their child-student data and records. The committee supports this change, which is a part of the committee's report this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the recommendations of the board's Policy Review Committee?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion at this time? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have a related item, related to Policy 5230. I move that the board directs the superintendent to update Rule 6202 Form A, Parental Privacy Preferences, to allow parents to opt out of directory information and intellectual property release while permitting use exclusively as related to the school yearbook, sports teams, and clubs.
Mr. Chairman. Well, again, that's a, does the motion?
Yes.
It's not on the agenda, number one.
Second.
Make a motion, it's not on the agenda, number one. We voted to accept.
Related to the policy.
We voted to accept 5230. Frankly, you said so much that I couldn't even vote on it, because I don't understand the impact of all of it, and I'd like to see in advance how, whatever you're proposing, how it affects 5230. I have no idea in the world, other than what you said, and I can't follow it along.
Well, that's why we have discussion, which we can have now.
I want to see black and white, what you said and how it applies to this policy. We've already adopted this policy, so I don't know how you can go to amend it or tack anything onto it.
No, I'm not amending the policy. I'm moving to amend the rule associated with the policy.
Yeah, I think that that motion would be out of order. It's not on our agenda to discuss. We can put it on a future meeting if it's appropriate, but it wouldn't be appropriate for us to vote on an item that's not on the agenda.
Well, it's, Policy 5230 is on the agenda, and it relates directly to that.
But Rule 5230 is not on the agenda, superintendent's rule. There's a difference between policy and rule.
Okay, well, Rule 6202 is actually in the informational section, so could I make my motion at that time?
We don't vote on informational.
We don't move on information. But we can, if it's appropriate, we'll put it on an agenda for a future meeting.
Okay, so I ask that we put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
We'll look at, have to look at, have to look at that. Okay. All right. Well, wait a minute. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Collins?
I hear you, but I'm confused. I understand things have to be on the agenda, but again, I don't like shutting people up. I've made that abundantly clear innumerable times. You know, I have no idea what Mrs. Miller's talking about either, and so I obviously agree with what David said, but, you know, if she is making a point surrounding this policy and the rule that's adopted, superintendent's rule pursuant to it, wouldn't it be more appropriate to ask the Policy Review Committee first to look at it and then come back to us? Because I've, I mean, I've been here for five years, and I don't have any idea how we do this procedurally, but I don't want to just summarily, you know, and you're not doing that. You're saying we'll talk about it later, maybe, but I'm saying we need to talk about it for sure sometime in some way. That's all.
Well, then I will ask our Policy Review Committee to look at the rule, how it affects the policy, and advise us.
Sure, absolutely.
But we also take note that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But we don't dictate rule.
Right.
And I need to make that abundantly clear. That's why I didn't volunteer PRC, but certainly PRC can look at the rule, but we don't dictate the rule.
Okay. Thank you.
And maybe you can go back and tell us, you know, at least, do you see it consistent with the policy or something like that?
Absolutely.
That would be good.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is Personnel Matters, and for that, I'll ask Dr. Mayo to come forward.
Good evening, Chairman McDaniel's, Dr. Dance, members of the board. I'd like to board consent for the following personnel matters, retirements, and resignations.
Thank you, Dr. Mayo. Do I have a motion to approve Exhibits H1 and H2?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Our next item is Administrative Appointments, and I'll call on Dr. Dance.
Thank you, Chairman McDaniel's, members of the board. I would like to bring forward for your approval the following administrative appointments. Assistant Principal Dundee- Assistant Principal at Dundalk High School, Assistant Principal Golden Ring Middle School, Assistant Principal Whitlawn High School, Community Superintendent, Executive Director of Office of School Safety and Security, and Manager of the Enterprise Resource Planning System Development and Administration, which is our HR and financial planning system.
Thank you, Dr. Dance. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative appointment as presented in Exhibit I?
So moved.
Does a second?
Second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Dr. Dance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Would like to introduce several individuals who are being promoted, but also one individual who's new to our team. First is for the Assistant Principal Position at Dundalk High School, and I saw Ms. Kristi Anelli here tonight with him. Currently, right now, a resource teacher at Dundalk High School, that's Mr. Andrew Demme. Mr. Demme, I know you have Ms. Anelli here with you, but do you have any other family and friends here with you tonight?
No, watching at home.
Congratulations on your promotion. Next is for the Assistant Principal Position at Whitlawn High School, and currently, right now, an Assistant Principal in Anarundel County Public Schools, that's James Lewis Gordon. Mr. Gordon, welcome to the team. Do you have any family or friends here with you tonight?
No, sir.
Congratulations. Welcome to the team. Next is for the Assistant Principal Position at Golden Ring Middle School, currently, right now, a social studies teacher at Golden Ring Middle School, that's Terrence Robinson. Terrence, I know you have several family here with you tonight, so can you mind introducing them to us?
This is my mom, Dorky Allen, great former teacher at Golden Ring Public Schools, and she's in Ballarat County as well. This is my wife, Denise Robinson, from Indianapolis, Indiana. And this is my newborn. This is my junior, Terrence Robinson.
Hey, Terrence, who I thought was... Terrence, congratulations again on your promotion, and a beautiful family. Next is for the Manager of the Enterprise Resource Planning System, again, which is an important system, which is our financial and HR system. Currently, right now, Team Leader for Business Systems Administration, that's Lawrence Rowland. And Larry, other than Ms. Bernop, do you have any other family and friends here with you tonight?
Leah and Barbara.
Congratulations to you two as well. Congratulations again, Larry. Next is for the Executive Director of School Safety and Security. Right now, the acting Executive Director for that office is April Lewis. You've been doing this job for quite some time now, so congratulations to you. You have any family and friends here with you, other than myself and Mr. Smith?
My very supportive husband is here.
Congratulations. Last, for the position of Community Superintendent, currently, right now, Senior Executive Director for Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. George Roberts. George, do you have any family or friends here, other than all of us, tonight with you?
It's a spring concert night, so no...
Congratulations, George. And Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I would like to also introduce, and the board was very upfront with me when we decided to redo our school office structure, they wanted to make sure we had an office that was really based on school support. And currently, right now, we do have two Assistant Superintendents who are transferring over to the role of Community Superintendent. So if I could ask Dr. Penelope Martin Knox and Ms. Karen Blaner, if you could please stand to be recognized. We are currently still advertising and interviewing for our fourth Community Superintendent, but I'm really looking forward to working with Dr. Martin Knox, Ms. Blaner, and Mr. Roberts, as three of our four Community Superintendents. Congratulations to the three of you.
Thank you, Dr. Dance. And Ms. Decker, for the record, I just wanted to note, Mrs. Causey abstained from the last vote. Thank you. All right, our next agenda item is action taken in closed session, and for that, I'll call Mr. Nussbaum forward.
Good evening. Earlier this evening, the board considered an appeal regarding a confidential student matter in your quasi-judicial capacity. The matter was considered on the record, because there was no request for oral argument made. At this time, it would be appropriate to confirm the action taken by the board in closed session in that matter, which was hearing examiner number 16-37.
Thank you, Mr. Nussbaum. Do I have a motion to approve action taken in closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this time? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Thank you, and the order's on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nussbaum. All right, our next agenda item is Contract Awards, and for that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, the board's Building and Contracts Committee met earlier this evening. There were only two members there, because Mr. Stewart and Mr. Gillis were not able to attend this evening. Mrs. Causey and myself were there, and I want to thank Kathleen particularly for bringing forward many thought-provoking and very precise questions, and to thank George and Pete for preparing answers and moving the meeting along very satisfactorily, so that Mrs. Causey and I were satisfied that Items K1 through K14 should be forwarded to the full board for approval, and I'm doing that at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, and I'll also compliment Ms. Causey for the questions that she submits, and gives the panel time to answer them, and it does help us make better decisions. Do you have a question?
I just want... Mr. Chair, I'd just like to separate out Contract MWE 81314, Item K5.
K5. All right, then I'll ask for a motion to accept Items K1 through K4, and K6 through K14.
So moved.
All right, any...
We don't need a second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, and now we'll discuss... I'm going to ask for a motion to accept Item K5, and then we'll discuss that.
So moved.
Is there... Okay, we don't need a second. Big discussion? Go ahead.
Yes, as I have questioned other contracts similarly, I questioned the contract during the meeting as to the length, and also to the terms. So I would just suggest to my fellow board members that we amend the contract to be more consistent with our other contracts, which are five years, and to prorate the modification amount accordingly.
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we didn't exactly discuss that in Contracts Committee, but I would like to hear, obviously, hear from George on that. I would be inclined to suggest that we not do that. However, I'd like to hear George's reaction, and perhaps we will.
I'm sorry, before we... Kathleen, can I hear your rationale behind why?
Well, Item K5, the previous estimated contract spending authority was $475,000, and to date, we have spent $260,000. So it's really quite a jump up in dollar value, and also in the length of the contract. So I just, as a general principle, I don't think it's appropriate to restrict the school system to that length of time, especially when this board in 2018 is going to be drastically different after, perhaps, after the elections. So to, you know, to have the school system restricted to this contract for that length of time, I don't think is appropriate.
And Mrs. Saris, or Mr. Dixon, could you comment on the effect of changing the period that the contract is...
The amount, the purchasing authority was based on the expansion of, the regular expansion of the program to all schools. We obviously do not know what future funding we'll be getting for the program. It's been rolled out very modestly over three years, and we have spent, as Ms. Causey says, the $260,000 to date. So many software licenses are approved for 10, 15, and sometimes open-ended periods. For instance, our current mainframe HR and financial package software was acquired in 1999. And when you make a multi, you know, significant investment, you don't anticipate completely leaving that platform and moving to something else. So there's certainly nothing that would... No reason not to do it, you know. The program is only, like anything else, funded on a year-to-year basis, so that if we don't have the funding, we don't do the program. I don't think that approving a 10-year, or a 13-year, or a five-year contract really has any strategic bearing on practically, you know, how this is implemented.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Yes. How was this procurement solicited? In other words, was it the understanding of those who decided to offer their services that this would be for eight and a half years, or...
Right. This is curriculum, and we asked for proposals from a number of vendors, and it was selected by the Division of Curriculum and Instruction as best meeting their needs. So it was not a low-bid type of contract.
No, I'm really speaking in terms of the length and the duration, just so that there would not be any kind of protest if, in fact, those submitting their proposals thought it was with the understanding of, you know, the extended time, assuming there was funding. I mean, obviously, every vendor understands if it's not funded every year...
Right, and that language is in the contract, the appropriation language.
Ms. Johnson?
Well, I think it's important that if, you know, world languages is something that the county is going to move forward with as one of their initiatives, that we maintain this contract, we move forward with this contract, because after 2018, no matter what the school system looks like, no matter what the board looks like, it's something that's been important to the county as a whole. So I say that we vote for the contract.
Mr. Vurch?
Gentlemen, do you have any indication that any country in the world will be changing its current use of language over the period of this contract?
No.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Yeah. I had a question for Ms. Causey. If we do have the right to end the contract without penalty, can you help me understand the disadvantage of extending the term? If we can just stop it in year six, or year seven, or...
Well, it's one of those things where if it's in motion, it tends to stay in motion, but if it's a contract that has a date, and then it would need to be renewed, then it will come through purchasing, through the regular processes. The other thing is that technology typically, the prices decrease over time, but if you're locked into a contract at a higher price, and there's not a specific date certain where it should get pulled forward to be reevaluated, then the system will not realize those cost savings. So for those reasons, I would say a shorter-term contract would be appropriate.
All right. Ms. Miller?
Yes, for me, also, it is a matter of accountability. We have a tendency, as a school system, to jump feet-first in and kind of overcommit ourselves prematurely. So this, and I guess I ought to just state what the change is here. It goes from $475,000 to over $7 million, which is huge, and it's a big commitment. Can... Mr. Saris, can you explain to me, it looks to me, if I'm reading this right, that the original term was eight years, is that right?
The original... Correct. And so the value is based on, at fully expand, at the fully expanded limit of about $550,000 a year, is how we get to this large number. Now, there's no telling how long it's going to take us to obtain the funding to go from 40 schools to 110 schools. So we made this projection based on the most conservative or largest possible number.
In the statements that if we run out of funding, you said, then we can, we can end, you know, it's year by year.
The contract can be terminated with 30 days' notice.
But that's only if we're running out. It's only because of funding issues.
No, it can be terminated for convenience as well. There's a non-appropriation clause, as well as a termination for convenience within 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, we are, we're going to vote on Mrs. Causey's amendment to change the term from eight years to five years? Is that what the motion said?
Well, currently, it's 13 years, taking it back to five.
13 back to five, okay. All right, all in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Okay, the motion does not carry. So I will ask if there's a motion to accept K5 as written, or as presented.
We already had a motion, I think, but I'll make it again.
All right. Is there... We don't need a second?
No.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. And those opposed? All right. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
All right, our next item is our Report on Policies, and I'll turn that back to Ms. Williams.
Good evening again. Presented as first readers are Policies Number, Policy Number 1270, and Policy Number 4005. It's being asked that it be moved to second reader.
All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the recommendation of the board's Policy Review Committee?
So moved.
There's no second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Williams. All right, our next agenda item is actually Board Member Comments. And with that, I'll ask, Mr. Vurch, are you ready over there for some comment?
You can bet I'm ready, although I... My recollection was you went to Mr. Stewart last time, but he wasn't ready, so he came to me, but I'm okay with that.
That's right.
I do note that when we had our parliamentary procedure, that it was recommended that the chair not always keep calling on the same people, in an effort to demonstrate his or her fairness. Just a couple of comments. I went to the Ties and Pearls event that the student and staff at Shady Spring Elementary School put on with some of their school partners, including Martin Zestwin. It was a great event. You know, young people move between a lot of different environments, the formal environment, the informal environment, and these students learn to make that seamless transition. Politeness, etiquette, public speaking, dressing for success, all of these things that you see in these fourth and fifth graders, and you say to yourself, what a really neat thing to do. The kids are really enjoying themselves, their parents couldn't be prouder, I was glad to be there, and it was officially billed as a high T. I'll leave it at that. Also want to mention, notwithstanding the obvious dangers of overstating the MAP test data, there is good news to report about our Hawthorne Elementary School students there significantly have grown in their scores over the past two years. Hats off to the students, and to the staff, and to the most excellent principal, Yvonne Barhite, for the good news there. I want to thank, in a related Hawthorne note, I want to thank our board members for their vote on one of the contracts tonight. It will go a long way to addressing a transportation safety matter, parking matter, at the school, and as a school safety. When I was 11 and 12, I had that post, and in fact, had to stop an assistant superintendent, who later became superintendent, I had to stop him in his Volvo, because there were kids in the crosswalk. And that matter will be remedied. The superintendent has advised me tonight that it may be remedied in advance of school starting, and I'm pleased to report that that school will also be much cooler than it was on the... first day of classes in August of last year. Finally, I wanted to note that this guy will be attending a number of graduations in our school system, six of them from Overly to Kenwood, to Perry Hall, to Parkville, to Eastern in Chesapeake. He will be traveling incognito as a mustached distinguished member of the Baltimore County Board of Education. If you see him, don't give away his identity, just kind of nod, and he'll nod back. Mr. Chairman, I will pass this along to my members to see this young gentleman who did not attend a tie and pearls event, but was taught about being a gentleman by his parents. There you go, Ms. Miller.
I love it, I love it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vurch. Ms. Miller?
I want to thank all of the many stakeholders who have supported immediate air conditioning relief for our students and teachers. Your involvement has been the catalyst, along with the Board of Public Works, in getting the promise of an accelerated implementation schedule for central air from the county executive. Still have a few goals to achieve, an effective heat closure policy by August, and portable AC units in those classrooms still needing relief. And I've just lost my place here. You've proven that advocacy works, so keep it up. Secondly, Ed Gillis and I will be attending our first meeting with the Central Office to address issues around safety and technology on June 30. While I'm excited to have this critical effort move forward, I am disappointed in the fact that it took four months for the first meeting to occur, and also that the meeting will be only bimonthly, that's once every two months, and limited to one hour, or at least scheduled for one hour in duration. That means this committee is allotting only six hours per year to address these critical issues through the committee. I remain optimistic, and I look forward to keeping the board and the public informed on our progress.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Johnson?
I also want to thank the county executive, the county council, the superintendent, and all the stakeholders who had a part in accelerating the air condition, the AC relief here throughout the county. I wanted to disagree with Ms. Miller and Ms. Causey's points or objections about the contract and the way in which we came about the contract, the discussions, the closed door behind, you know, out in public discussions. I think it was a, not a smooth, as smooth as some would like process, but with it all said and done, we all have had plenty of opportunity to discuss individually and as a board. I also wanted to, and I might need Ms. White's help on this, at the last curriculum committee, they discussed a steam project, or a steam magnet at Cromwell Valley and an additional elementary school. And it was really interesting, and at the next curriculum committee update, I will give, I will give some more information.
Arts.
Yep, so we're adding arts to the stem.
I thought you mispronounced something.
And one of the components of that is coding, and I thought that was really interesting and really great to incorporate that in some of our elementary schools. Thank you.
Johnson, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick comments. In 1974, at Kenwood High School, I was the class sponsor of the senior class where that mysterious picture of that mysterious person took place. I just want to point, point that tidbit of information out for Mrs. Eaton. I know she looks excited to hear that news.
[laughter]
You're not supposed to laugh at your own jokes, Mrs. Eaton, but I couldn't contain myself. The Sun paper, a week or so ago, had a very good editorial talking about air conditioning in Baltimore County. And they talked about all of the players from, they talked about Governor Hogan, they talked about Comptroller Francho, they talked about the county executive, county executive cabinets, the Baltimore County Council, Superintendent Dance, and I would add in the legislative leaders and everyone, and everyone involved, and it was time for all of them to declare victory, and to, all of them take a bow and just get on with the business of getting the job done. And I think I want to add my voice to that and congratulate everyone, though, in any part, in encouragement, or advocacy, or funding, or anything that occurred along the way, because we have come so far, and we now know that we are going to have, in the next couple of years, all of our schools air-conditioned, central air, and everything is going to be fine. And victory has a thousand friends, and everyone involved, from Governor Hogan to the county executive, and everyone in between, can all take a bow and all take credit, so let's give all of them credit, and let's get on with the job of getting it done finally. And I want to observe that this meeting is going to end before the first inning of the Oriole game starts if I stop talking.
Thank you. Ms. Wyatt?
Yes, I just want to go piggyback off of what everybody else has said about air conditioning. Thank you to everyone who's advocated for it. I know you both have been to BPD meetings, so, and everyone, Dr. Comptroller Hogan, I mean, sorry, Comptroller Francho and Governor Hogan, who've been extreme advocates, and I've had personal conversations with Comptroller Francho, so he's been a really huge advocate. Thank you, Comptroller. Thank you to the students who went and talked at BPW. Thank you to the teachers and our parent advocates, everyone who's, Dr. Dance, all of our county executives, county executive and county council. They've been a huge advocate for all of our schools to be air-conditioned in the near future, so I'm really excited to see that, and I hope everything goes well. I mean, even though I won't be here, but my school, my school will be getting air conditioning in the next two years, so I'm very happy about that. So, thank you, and, yeah, we're going to move on. Also, last thing, thank you to the board members who attended Bull Roast last week, and thank you, Dr. Dance, for attending, as well as congratulations to Mr. Michael Dickerson for winning BCSE Friend of BCSE Award. And thank you for being such a huge supporter of student leadership, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Mr. Yoffelein?
Thank you. I wanted to proudly say that I supported the vote for the superintendent's contract. I disagree with everything that Ms. Miller said, I find no credibility in any of it. Having said that, I wanted to say that there's always something that's overlooked when we discuss and determine the value of an individual, and that's the intrinsic values that that person brings, not only to our school system, to our county. As many of you remember, when base relocation took place in New Jersey, we had many, many, many families who were relocated to Maryland come to the administration building to inquire about our school system, our schools. And that's happened to be the determining factor where people, why people locate in Baltimore County, aside from employment. So I'm very proud to say that I think our superintendent has publicly shown exactly what we have, a vibrant school system, and one that we can be very proud of. And I really thank him for his participation in all his public appearances, because that shows great value of our system and where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yoffelein. Ms. Causey?
Good evening. I will keep this short. I did want to second, third, and fourth what everyone has said about the improvements in the timeframe to get the schools and the teachers and the students relief from heat, and also to avoid economic setbacks if we end up having to close schools because of heat. I do want to say that one person that has not been mentioned is Treasurer Nancy Kopp, who has also been concerned about the air conditioning issue when I've been in attendance at the Board of Public Works meetings. Also, I want to say that although it's been fantastic that the response and the focus towards our facilities has increased due to pressure, due to parents' pressure, advocates' pressure, due to the county council, due to the superintendent, due to the board members, due to the county executive responding to all of that. But it really should not come down to public pressure. What it should come down to is the Board of Education proactively doing our job. And to that end, I would say that the Board of Education should explore, maybe after July, a real 10-year facilities plan that will be able to analyze all of the needs of the community, because there are more than just air conditioning. We still have the water problems, and we have overcrowding and so forth. And they should be all addressed in a systemic way, where it's not just which community has the greatest advocates involved, or that we get into this big wrangle on a state level and so forth, in order to get the focus where it needs to be. So I would encourage my fellow board members to put that on the agenda, put that in our minds, to address in this coming year. I also want to say that Policy Review Committee meeting on Monday, May 17, I think we got a lot of really good work done, and I want to congratulate my committee chair, Romaine Williams, and Ms. Johnson and Mr. Vurch. So we're excited about bringing forward a heat closure policy at the next meeting for the community to hear and respond to. I am also looking forward to graduations. It's going to be wonderful to be spending time celebrating the many accomplishments of our students, and also celebrating the hard work and encouragement of each person in the system that got them to that graduation stage. And that includes the teachers and the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the support staff, and the administration, and Dr. Dance, and the members of the board here that do work hard in trying to get our arms around all of the functioning of the system and to make the best decisions that we can. So I'm really looking forward to that, and I thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Causey.
Thank you. I just want to commend Nick and Edicha for the outstanding job they did in having the closing activity, was really well-attended. The students were so excited and so proud, and really, really, really proud of you, Edicha, and Nick, although he's not here tonight. I also want to, is Nick here? Where?
He's not in.
Oh, oh, Nick Burnton Prentice.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nick Burnton Prentice.
Not our Nick.
Oh, yeah.
Our Nick snuck in, too.
To the extent that the board does not have independent funding, I think that the board did all that it could do in terms of air conditioning, including when it asked for the additional money to be put in the budget. I'm just thankful for all of the input from everybody who made it possible for our schools and for our kids and for our teachers and the rest of the administration, that our schools are on target, hopefully, to have the, all schools air-conditioned in 2017. So I'm just really excited about that, very appreciative of our county executive and the leadership that he has shown in not doing a piecemeal job with the whole air conditioning issue. I want to thank our superintendent for his courage, and just for the manner and how he handled himself before the BPW meeting. And I also want to thank all of the legislators who helped make it possible, as well as the BPW members for whatever input they had, and also bringing this to fruition. I also want to say that I am very proud of the decision that was made by this board to award the contract to the superintendent tonight. I believe that the superintendent has done an outstanding job. I'm not aware of any proven information that he has done anything inappropriate, and I think this county is so much better off for having Dr. Dallas Dance as the superintendent of our schools. I'm also looking forward to the several graduations. I'm excited, I always get excited to see so many kids. They're excited, and I'm, I know it's going to be a wonderful day for all of our students. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Eaton?
Yes, I don't like to repeat what other board members said, but I would like to thank Dr. Dance and Kevin Camentz, and all those that were involved in getting our schools central air-conditioned. And Saturday morning, I watched It's Academic, and I would like to congratulate Catonsville High School for winning.
All right, okay. Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
I wanted to say a few things. Well, first, I thought we'd have maybe three more hours tonight, so. I am disappointed, as I know all of you are.
First inning's almost over, Nick.
All right. Coming from you.
That was a good. One for Nick.
On the subject of air conditioning, I know we've called out a lot of people, but I did want to thank Dr. Dance and his team, Kevin Smith, George, Pete. I mean, I know you guys spend a tremendous amount of time making it happen and working behind the scenes, and I hope you know that it goes noticed, not unnoticed, and particularly by this board. And although I'm certainly open to a longer-term analysis and study of facilities, I do want to thank stakeholders for raising passionate concerns, and stakeholder input, even if it's very active input, is necessary in this process. You know, we have to build a consensus, and this should only encourage additional input, it shouldn't discourage it, and surely should only encourage this board that we can do big things with the community, not that we're falling down on our job. And finally, I do want to say that although we've been able to make some good steps here with the superintendent's contract with air conditioning as we press forward, we do need to remember that on air conditioning, it's not over completely, right? So we have to still have a well-crafted policy, we have to ensure that our water supplies and other essential needs are met in this interim period, and we have to be very sensitive that a 100-degree classroom, a 90-degree classroom, even for a day, is a very significant challenge and burden for teachers, kids, parents, everyone alike. And finally, I look forward to graduation as well. My bowtie will not be as big as this one, but hopefully I can still make a statement, right? Right, Steve? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. And as we wrap up, I did want to mention that I had the privilege of attending the Maryland State Board of Education meeting earlier today, where our Baltimore County Teacher of the Year, Cory Carter, was honored, along with Mrs. White and some others, and want to extend congratulations to him, and also mention that the State Board of Agenda, Board of Education agenda had some interesting items on there about English language learners, which are, you know, a significant part of our changing demographics in the state of Maryland, and something that all of our boards of education need to keep in front of us, along with teacher and principal evaluations. Those were two items that I think are going to be very timely for us to stay abreast of as, as things move forward. With that, I just would note the information items that have come out with the meeting information tonight, revised superintendent's Rule 5230, 6202, a financial report ending March 2015 and 2016, and the 2016 Legislative Session final summary. As far as announcements, again, just to repeat, we have a hearing, public hearing tomorrow here at Greenwood that begins at 7:00 PM on the FY 2018 Capitol Project. And anyone wishing to speak, the sign-up sheets will be out starting at 6:00 PM. And again, the hearing will take place here in Room 114. And if there are no other...
School gates on there. One more closed.
Oh, right, okay. Yeah, school and offices will be closed on Memorial Day, May 30. Hopefully, it won't rain all day, and our next board meeting is Tuesday, June 14, here at 7:00 PM. So, again, please sign the orders over at the table, and if nothing further, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.